I'd like to call the Lincoln Way Community High School District 210 meeting to order. Please stand your ready for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the principle of hope for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the breathing and justice of all.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Glass, here. Mr. Luchetti?
Here.
Mr. Kirking?
Here.
Mr. Kostic?
Here.
Mr. Lilo?
Here.
Mr. Janik?
Here.
Thank you. We have two individuals signed up for a public comment. First one is Sam McCallum.
We have to find ways to productively and positively address the broken pieces that still exist in this community. You may not like what I have to say about East and you certainly do not want to hear it, but we have to face reality. I blame many people for the issues that East is having. A topic of blame being with is the local residents who still continue to be a rain cloud covering over our district. And it is the same negativity of local residents that I initially blamed for the lack of transition for East students. Administration was damned if they do, damned if they don't, in regards to opening their doors to North students. However, then came the first football game. I remember when I first moved here, it was crazy to me that everyone went to East football games on Friday nights. Then when North opened, the same sense of pride carried over. So I only assumed the same coming back to East and I felt this could be what unites the East community. Instead, administration was rather poorly prepared for what everyone else had already expected in the large crowd. There was not enough student section roped off, so deans were forced to kick the kids out. As a result of this, less kids attended home game number two. This game I witnessed as adults sat in the roped off areas specifically meant for students, and again, students were being kicked out by the deans, not the adults. So the third and final home football game even less students attended. Missing in the audience was my sister, who had not missed a Friday night football game when I began as a student at Lincoln Way in 2006. The one thing I believe that could have united people led to more disappointment. But I stayed patient and positive, telling myself this was a learning curve and everyone was doing their best. Sydney did not make her fall sport, but life goes on. We found other ways to keep her busy while anxiously awaiting winter season. Winter season, end of winter season met winter athletic awards, except East did not host winter athletic awards this year. These student athletes were robbed of that recognition. I knew they were hosting a sectional, getting people in the building, hopefully earning some money through admission, and that the athletic director wouldn't possibly take this away from the kids if he didn't have to. At least that's what I told myself this time, because no one wants East to succeed for these kids more than I do. But reality is, there's actually no excuse for these student athletes to not be honored. This past Monday was spring sports award. It is possible that I was simply spoiled rotten at North, considering every award ceremony that my family attended, which was 11 in total, the athletes always left feeling special and the parents in awe. Norths were hosted in the auditorium with a big screen down and a beautiful highlight video played of all teams at all levels. Then before each sport was assigned their own room to the entire auditorium sang the fight song together. It breaks my heart to know that the East administration has taken zero pride in teaching the kids the Griffin fight song, such a simple gesture that could provide great unity and pride in East. East's spring athletic awards met in the gym. No videos, no excitement, no fight songs, no sense of pride. In fact, it seemed the athletic directors just couldn't get out of their fast enough. When announcing the breakout rooms, he even announced that some teams weren't getting a breakout room, and hopefully they'd do it later with their coach. Disappointment and sadness unite and begin to describe my feelings towards East Athletic Department this year. The lack of planning and preparation throughout is inexcusable. Monday night, all student athletes who earned a 3.5 GPA or higher were given T-shirts. However, just a little while later, coaches were receiving texts from the A.D. that they messed up, and the shirts were actually for varsity athletes only. Imagine disappointment in the underclassmen as they were handed a shirt honoring them only to have it taken away because of yet another Lincoln Way oversight. Matt Leich and Amy Wannegro set a precedent that I knew would be dearly missed. Matt and Amy's doors were always open and their offices were never empty with kids. They were like the second mom and dad to their athletes, so much so that I never played a game on the North floor without one of them there fully engaged cheering me and my teammates on, truly as if we were their own daughters. When I do see East's athletic director or the assistant there, they're in the bleachers with their phones or laptops or often hiding away in their offices. I question why Matt and Amy work so well together to create a home away from home, why NYE struggles to provide the same level of dedication, passion, and enthusiasm for East athletes. And then I've realized that part of why I was so passionate about being a Phoenix was because I was following the lead of Matt and Amy. I fed off their energy and they ignited that athletic department, and I just don't see that same ambition out of East. But the point of me bringing this to your attention isn't to throw Mr. Vanderkorm his call like he amped us. It is to ask, when exactly are we going to start addressing the fact that East has some issues beyond a few angry parents? The North kids don't really like East, but what speaks volumes to me is that Central kids don't want to go back. It seems there is a major school spirit issue. Just as I fed off the energy of Matt and Amy, these kids too are feeding off the lack of energy from the adults within. By ignoring this issue, you're only giving the people who still live and breathe to make your lives miserable an easy excuse to do so. This is a fixable problem with which all of us are ignoring, hoping it just gets better in time. A year has gone on, and I've outlined in the Athletic Department alone, that time is not improving this situation. I understand that the school board's job is to not micromanage the administration, and I appreciate that. However, the school board is responsible for monitoring the actions and performances of those to whom they give authority, and right now, East is struggling. I think the summer would be an opportune time for brainstorming session to take place, to find ways to make next year better for the students and their parents. As always, I offer my assistance, and I hope a board member will step up and offer theirs as well. Tough decisions and tough conversations are not limited to Lincoln Way financials, and I believe this is one where all of us adults need to step up or need to make room for somebody who will.
Thank you. Our second person is Bennett Benjou.
Good evening. Thank you. On May 3rd, the former president of our school board, Kevin Malloy, posted a message of congratulations to Mr. Kirking, our new president, on Facebook. Congratulations and best wishes are certainly due to you, Mr. Kirking, as well as the other six board members at this table. Best wishes and prayers are also owed to our administrators, teachers, and other staff members, as you work as a team to navigate the challenging landscape that most of you have inherited but did not create. If you can restore the full trust of our entire community into the actions of this board and also restore the district to financial health as well as financial sustainability, this will be a tremendous accomplishment for which all of you can look back proudly for the rest of your days. In his message, Mr. Malloy lauded you, Mr. Kirking, with praise for having no hidden agenda and being willing to hold everyone accountable for achieving the turnaround. These are critically needed skills right now, and as an outside observer of your role as a board member, I can see where Mr. Malloy is coming from. Mr. Malloy went on to give you one piece of advice, and I want to quote now so there's no risk of ambiguity or distortion on my part. Trust the same people before you came onto the board, and only those people, because you will learn that the line of people wanting to be in that inner circle will turn on you the second you can no longer help them. As someone who has served on an Illinois school board for eight years, I can't emphasize enough how wrongheaded I believe this advice to be. It completely mischaracterizes how I believe you and the rest of the board, as well as our administrators, should think of your roles. Trusting only the people you trusted before you came onto the board is not a recipe for building community support. Trust is a two-way street, and you cannot be trusted by the community if you do not show trust and respect for each community member. More importantly, I believe the mountain we have to climb requires the help and assistance of any and all community members that are willing to participate, and probably even those that aren't. The more inclusive, trusting, and transparent you are as a board, the more quickly we will achieve success. Secondly, there should be no inner circle to let people into. There should be no individuals that are helped because any of you are on the board. It is a public body charged with governing a community institution that currently has lost the trust of a large portion of that community. Part of that loss of trust is the direct result of the fact that there has been an inner circle, an inner circle of people that many believe to have directly benefited from who they know and how they are connected. If after everything that has happened over the past two years, there is still an inner circle, your collective first order of business should be to expose it and eliminate it. With the start of a new board term, you have a unique opportunity to further shift the governance culture of the board and of the district. Make no mistake, while this district has enjoyed success and achievement in the past, it was all in spite of its governance model, not because of it. There should be no sacred cows relative to the decisions you make and how things were done in the past. I urge all of you to let your conscience be your guide on how you operate as a board member. You all know the right way to do this job, whether you think you do or not. Don't fall victim to those who want the community kept in the dark or to not engage the community on important subjects because it's too difficult or complicated. Each day, work to develop mechanisms and processes for increased communication and increased community engagement. These things will build trust and give you more breathing room for the difficult decisions you will unfortunately have to make as a group. Don't vote to support something you don't completely understand as an individual, regardless of what other board members may say or administrators or members of the community might think. Make sure that every decision you make is one you feel comfortable defending to the neighbor you run into while you're walking through the neighborhood or in the grocery store. Thank you again for your decision to run for this board and for your decision to continue to serve on it. As a community member, I start this new term with 100% confidence in each of you, but I will not hesitate to speak out if I see things moving, not moving, in the right direction or things moving in the wrong direction. Thank you very much.
Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of approval of minutes from the April 20th, 2017, and the May 1st, 2017 meetings, approval of payroll from May 5th, 2017, requests for out of state travel, a motion to approve the consent agenda is presented. In a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Mrs. Glass?
Aye.
Mr. Luchetti?
Aye.
Mr. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Lilo?
Aye.
Mr. Janik?
Aye.
Ms. Janice Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Kirking?
Aye. Thank you. Next, our student council presidents.
Hello, so this is our last board meeting. We decided we were going to talk about our past events that we feel very memorable to the Mitchell, who we are seniors, and everything that has been led up to graduation on May 30th. We're both very excited for. So prom was April 29th, and we had an amazing time. Our theme was... My Night at Gatsby. I am so sorry. I am getting all confused with everything, but it was an amazing time. There were a king and queen that were nominated that are great people. We also had a tie for princess. Luckily, I was able to win, and then we also had the vote for prince as well. I personally had an amazing time, and it was a great time to bond with all of my new friends I made this year. Our social was also very fun. We had a DJ that came out, and it was amazing. Everyone had fun on the dance floor. Everyone dressed up in little costumes. We also had a caricature artist that drew us, and it was very funny. I got drawn, and it was amazing. And then we also had pizza and lots of food. And the winners of our social costume contest represented the decades, so that was really cool to see with their creativity. This week was our senior week, so leading up to graduation. Monday, we had throwback day, so dress something like you would when you were younger. I dressed how I did junior high, which was extremely embarrassing. And then Tuesday, we had... What was Tuesday?
It's so long ago.
I know, it's so long ago.
Twin Day.
Yes, Twin Day. Yes, so that was very fun. This is hard. Wednesday, we dressed up Hawaiian Day. Today was Jersey Day. Tomorrow was Represent West, and then Monday, we will be wearing our new colleges that we will be attending in the fall. And we'll also be watching a senior video, which we're super excited for, if students were able to submit photos from all four years of high school. It's going to be super exciting to see all those past memories. And then this Tuesday, we had scholarship night, where many of our students were honored and able to receive scholarships from people within the community and then other outside sources. It was an amazing time. I really enjoyed it. It was really awesome to see everyone accomplish such things. And then today, we started our yearbook distribution, which it was a really, it's a really good yearbook. I appreciate it because there's some pages representing Lincoln Way Central from last year and their sports activities, and we also have West from last year, and then we kind of have a bond, and it's really amazing to see like where we came from and how we united as a school at the end, so thank you.
And then also, in a couple other news, over the last couple weeks, we had our Westies, which is a theater company kind of awards banquet where all the members of the theater company are invited out, and awards are given out to best actors, best actresses. Everyone gets a personalized individual award for some favorable moment that they had in the year. Then we also had our final band choir concerts, where we honored some of our seniors from the choirs and the bands. Then we also had our spring athletic awards this past evening on Wednesday night, where we honored our spring athletes and all the senior athletes and all varsity athletes along those lines. And then we had elections for senior class officers, junior class officers, sophomore and then freshman will be in the fall of next year, and then also student council elections for next year. And with us tonight, we want to introduce our president for next year for the Lincoln Way Western Council. Her name is Viza Jafford.
I look forward to being the new Eastern Council vice president and getting to know all of you next year.
Real quick, Sam Mitchell, next year's plans?
I will be attending the University of Southern California to study journalism.
And I'll be attending University of Alabama studying engineering and Spanish.
How about Central?
All right, well, I can't believe this is our last board meeting already. Our last one. We guys have plenty more to talk about. So this week, this past week, all of our students here at Central have been super busy with getting, looking forward to the end of the year and preparing for finals, but for our seniors, it has been especially special. Last Wednesday night, we hosted our scholarship night, and over 100 seniors were able to receive scholarships, a lot received more than one, which was incredible to watch, all of our seniors, you know, be able to be recognized for all of their various talents, which that was super cool. And then last Thursday night, here in this very room, our student council hosted, the seniors hosted Teachers of the Night, which was our new dinner, where we each invited a teacher, and we wrote an essay about them. We were able to read it to the whole group, and that was, I've received so many compliments from all the teachers who attended. They really loved it, and we're so happy that they'll be continuing it next year, even though it's without us. And then we received our yearbooks last week as well, and the theme for our yearbook was The Perfect Blend, which was, there's no better way to sum up our year at Central this year. Our East kids have assimilated so well to this school, and we're just one big happy family. The Knights and the Griffins together, our yearbook was Perfect Blend of Red and Blue, and it was coffee themed and very appropriate for our Central students.
And then this past Friday, we had our annual social, which is for juniors and seniors. And it was a huge hit because a lot of people liked great food that was catered there, and also we got a lot of good remarks from the DJ, which is there. And then this past Saturday was prom, and then that was also a really huge success, and the theme was Royal Renaissance. There was also a fireworks display like midway through, and everyone, everyone that I talked to thought that that was one, that was really cool. And we also had a very good turnout, which I think everyone was happy about. And then this Monday, we have a picnic for the seniors during our sixth and seventh period, which is kind of like a tailgate where we'll have like food, bags, and different games. And it'll kind of be a good way of sending off the seniors, because that'll be our last day of the opening finals. And then our new president for next year is Michelle Burke.
Plans for next year?
I'm going to Arizona State and majoring in engineering computer science.
And then I will be attending San Luis University to study secondary education and English.
All right, yeah, I'm Grant Smiley. Lincoln Way. They brought their own cheering.
Well, it's been quite a journey with everyone, so thank you for that. So it looks like the end of the school year is quickly coming to an end, and Lincoln Way East is looking to finish strong. Two weeks ago, our student council executive board hosted its annual framing dinner, in which 22 teachers from throughout the district were honored on this night by our students. Each student chose a teacher that has made a positive impact on their life. They then wrote an essay communicating the impact the teacher has made on the student. Teachers were invited anonymously, treated to a wonderful, wonderful dinner catered by Parmesan's, and then the students shared their essays with the attendees. Faculty received a small gift bag in appreciation for their impact and efforts, receiving a framed picture of the teacher with their student as well. It was a wonderful night for all involved and was a great way to celebrate teacher appreciation. Along with that, every Wednesday at Lincoln Way East, it's nicknamed World Music Wednesday. Each Wednesday, a country selected and traditional music representing that culture of one of our students is played both before and after school. Yesterday was our final World Music Wednesday, and we celebrated different cultures by providing food samples from different places across the world to every Lincoln Way student during their lunch hours. Countries like France, Italy, Mexico, Spain, Sweden, along with many others were represented, with foods like meatballs, churros, and French toast given to the students, just the name of the food. As the school year is coming to an end, a lot of IHSA sports are currently entering their state series competitions. Lincoln Way East would like to wish the varsity boys' water polo team good luck, as they have qualified for state and will compete this weekend. We also had two Griffins who qualified for the state finals in badminton. They ended up winning their first two matches and represented Lincoln Way East very well. We would like to congratulate Emily Riff and Becca Riff. In addition, our 12 members of our girls' track and field team will compete in the state finals this weekend at Eastern Illinois University. And along with that, tomorrow and Saturday is the boys' sectional competition, where we look to win and advance all six players to the state series as well. So we wish them the best of luck.
Last night, Lincoln Way East held its annual scholarship night in the auditorium. Students, teachers, administration, parents, and community members were in attendance to honor some of our best students and get them starting off on the right foot as they further their education. Student council gave away 13 scholarships last night from ticket sales, proceeds from the Mr. and Ms. Griffin show. Overall, 201 scholarships were given to 158 students totaling over $1,307,000. Overall, it was a great night to be a part of. Tomorrow, during all lunch hour, seniors will be able to enjoy the senior picnic out on the football field hosted by Dr. Maholic, and the seniors will be able to celebrate their last full day of their high school careers on Monday with the senior tailgate, 6:30 in the morning. Wrapping up with the year, 2016, 2017 was a memorable one for the Griffins. Academically, we had a record number of AP toss takers. Our sports teams experienced many highs, the football team being featured on Comcast Sports Night the Drive, and the basketball team setting a school record for wins and beat the number one team in the state. Also, our cheer team winning state. Our school spirit was strong as ever. 2,400 people attended homecoming, 800 attended work, 1,000 at prom, and tomorrow's social will be a heavily attended event as well. Our last pub assembly of students laughing and feeling the Griffin pride. The Mr. and Ms. Griffin was one of the can't-miss events of the school year. The black and blue was one of pride, and not only is it a great day to be a Griffin, it's definitely a great year to be a Griffin. And speaking from the heart a little bit, leaving North, I was definitely nervous of some of the opportunities I'd missed out on, but the friendships I made at East honestly made up for it so easily. I, as well as many other of my Phoenix, made so many friendships that'll last for years to come, and that means more to me than anything personally. I thoroughly enjoyed my senior year at East, and I hope that many of my peers did as well. And although it has its room for improvements, it's definitely still a special place to be a part of, and I'm glad that I had the opportunity to be a part of it. And also, as I lead Lincoln Way, I think we have left a pretty cool legacy for future Griffins to be a part of that definitely still enhances the spirit of the Phoenix, which means a lot to me as well. And I wish future Griffins luck, and also you guys luck in the future, and thank you for these last 20 years, because they were very memorable. And also, let's introduce our next student council president, Anna Bamford.
I will attend the University of Alabama and study for national economics.
And then I will attend the University of Illinois at Chicago, studying biology with a guarantee into their medical school.
All right, next on the agenda is curriculum and instruction.
Right before we start our report, we have a few students here tonight who mentioned at the last board meeting that we had 12 kids that earned that statewide award in reading, and so we wanted to take a minute and recognize the three who were able to be here tonight. The other nine are reading something somewhere. But again, just as a reminder, it's, they have to read 25 books, you know, demonstrate knowledge and understanding of the books in addition to being outstanding students and everything else that that means. And so Danny Hudzian. Sebastian Katani. I'm loving this. The guys are getting chocolate and just got flowers for the young ladies. That's Eileen Cochet, the librarian media center at Central that coordinates the program. And then a special congratulations to Kayla Wright, who read all 25 books every year for a total of 100 books during her high school career. That's incredible. Thank you. You represented us beautifully. That's great stuff. Appreciate you being here.
Forgive me Leonard Peacock.
What was the name of that?
Forgive me Leonard Peacock.
Forgive me Leonard Peacock. I have a lot of favorites, so I can't really pick.
I'm a subway, I don't watch the favorites. I can't really pick one out of all of them.
Is it mystery or is it?
Mystery sucks for me.
I really don't have a huge genre, so if you got anything, I'd say so.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
Dr. Amy Fury is going to give us an update on ESSA, and that's the new version of the No Child Left Behind. Some absolutely significant changes in the way schools are going to be looked at, rated, graded, and this is important for us to know.
Yeah, as Tim mentioned, in April, I was able to attend the state board's ESSA conference, where districts were updated on the implementation plan. So as you may know, ESSA stands for the Average Student Success Act. It is replacing NCLB, No Child Left Behind. Next year, in 2017-18, will be a transition year, and most of the laws having to do with NCLB are still in place as the year, as the state begins to figure out how to implement this federal law. 20, I'm sorry, 2018 and '19 will be the full implementation year, and one of the most important features of the new ESSA plan will be the accountability system. So 2019 will be the first year of implementation when it comes out with a new accountability system for school districts, the details of which the state is working out. But here's what we know so far. The high school accountability system will begin with academic indicators at 75%. Now, keep in mind, the way that used to be measured was through AYP at 100%, and that was either we met AYP or we didn't. Now, there will be as many as nine different factors measuring progress instead. So ESSA instead brings at least academic indicators counting 75%. The first indicator will still be that state accountability standardized test. This time, it is the SAT. We first implemented this back on April 5th, and that will be divided into both the ELA and math. And after the science joins the testing, then it will be reduced down to 7.5% apiece. Also, a huge factor will be our graduation rates. That will count 50%. Our ELL, our... to what we had been scoring with the ACT, if not slightly higher. So we were pretty pleased with that. In terms of the graduation rate, we are, along with our alternative education program, we are almost at a 98% graduation level, which we're very proud of. We have less than 1% students who are chronically absent. We have what would be considered 95% of our freshmen on track, and we know who the 5% are. We've already identified them and gotten, provided services and supports for them. College and Career Ready Indicator, as I mentioned, it's yet to be determined, but we know where our AP courses are strong, our dual credit courses are strong. Climate service, the climate survey that the five essentials, again, Tim's going to share with you, we got strong, very nice, strong scores even this year, which he's going to share in just a moment. And then, we're not sure how they're going to measure this, participation in fine arts, opportunities, what's available, but we know, you know, we've got one of the strongest art and music departments in the state. That is something that, you know, that we are not worried about. Okay, so what are the levels of performance? Each school will then be judged in one of, with one of four labels. So tier one will have no underperforming subgroups, a graduation rate higher than 67% and a top performance in the top 10%, of the schools. A tier two will also have no underperforming subgroups, 67% higher graduation rate, but not necessarily in the top 10% of the schools, and then it kind of goes from there. So if you notice what we've kind of highlighted here, obviously, subgroups is going to be something that the state is going to measure and monitor quite closely. Subgroups such as, you know, our ELL population, or our students with IEPs, even our racially diverse students, this is something that we will, obviously, you know, if the state is going to be measuring and monitoring this heavily, obviously, this is something that we will be obviously looking at as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Tim, who's going to walk you through the five essentials.
To be brutally honest, there were two things I was terrified of this year, and this was one of them. The five essentials survey, when we're worried about kids coming from new schools, we actually called the state and said, do we have to do that this year? Because in October, this was given in October and November, kids who hadn't been in their current school were to rate their current school, and so we didn't know how that would turn out. But again, we must have done some really good things in that first quarter, because these are as higher, higher than they've been in the past. And that, that's an indicator of two things. It's teacher satisfaction with the school they're in and how students feel about the schools and classes that they're in. So I wanted to show you just one or two highlights from each building. So if you're clicking, the next one is just, this is Lincolnway Central Snapshot. The darker the blue, the better on this. They don't, they don't want to have different colors. It's just the darker you get, the more you have solid implementation. And so, so this was Central's, three of the top level, and then two of the second from the top level. What that correlates to then is they get an overall highest rating, which means the school is listed as most implementation. It's the highest that you can get, so. If you go to the next one, it's West. West had a really good balance, one very dark, three that were right there, ambitious instruction is kind of in the average range, but when they put that all together, the schools, that's still the highest ranking you can get. When you have your teachers and your students saying, doing a pretty good job, you know, it's very rare to see this much dark on any school's report card. And then East was in the highest or the second highest in all the categories, and they got the highest rating. So, so you could fall into three or four tiers in all four schools based on student, student reactions, how they feel, and teachers' feelings about their school were the highest they could get. Some individual highlights from each school that I thought were great. And this, principals are always on me, well, who wins? You know, so, so this year, two of the schools were at 98 and 99% overall rating, one was at 97. I think everybody wins, you know, in a transition year. That's, that's absolutely beautiful for kids who've only been in a building for about nine weeks. These are things, the highest things the teachers told us, very high rankings, 99% in professional development, that's Amy, that's the associate principals, the things they train our teachers in, expectations for post-secondary education, how well the kids feel prepared. Teacher-to-teacher trust, that was what I was worried about, threw a lot of teachers together who had never worked together in departments, and they just blended immediately. So I thought that was, those were great, real successes, okay? Lincolnway Central's highest area was a supportive environment. Kids and teachers felt, teachers had their back, the teachers and administration were here for them. That was terrific. East, I love this, the quality of student discussion, which is one of the high pieces, to get kids to talk. Kids feel like they're academically challenged, they're on target, they stay on task during class, was outstanding. And West's highest was collaborative teachers, which was really interesting, because West had probably the biggest mix of teachers. We had a lot of people coming from north that went to teach at West that hadn't really worked together at all, so. So all three of those are very positive. This is my favorite, academic press is what they call it. This is asking the kids, do your teachers push you? Do they, do they ask a lot of you? So we're going to have four quick pieces up here, you can click on all four. Students told us this, the teacher asked difficult questions on tests. Again, the more to the right, the dark blue, the better. My class challenges me. I really get a lot out of this class. This class requires me to do, to work hard, to do well. Those are all in the 80 and 90% range, and that's, again, our kids telling us. We had 80 to 90% of our students in each building take, take the surveys, so it's not a sampling. The other ones that we take a look at, and this is a combination of students and teachers, students use data and text references to support their ideas, that's over 90%. Students provide constructive feedback to their peers, they grade each other's paper, they help each other out, they build on each other's ideas during discussion, they participate in the discussion at some point, that's almost 90 or over 90 in every area. So those are high points, some things we need to work on. Discussion in math class, making sure that the kids are turning and talking to each other, that that's the new drive in math. A few things on communications between students, teachers, parents, but those are, our low ones are in the 60 and 70%. So, so again, something I was worried about, shame on me, you know, people did really well. Amy mentioned our state meet and exceed numbers. This is very preliminary. Again, the other thing I was worried about was the SAT. I think the SAT is harder than the ACT, and when we looked at what the SAT sent us back this week, over 80% of our kids district-wide met standards in reading and in writing. We've hit that before in writing, we've never hit it in reading or that combination. And math is always in that 60 to 70 range. Right now, it's at 60% incomplete. That's more than 20% higher than the state average. This group of juniors, when they were freshmen and did the park test, were at 11% and 14% meeting state standards. Two years later, they're a little bit over 60%. So it's getting it done. I know it's a different test, but, but we're very, very happy with those as preliminary numbers. Middle of the summer, we'll get some, some more detail for you. So again, I think when you talk about grit and resilience, we had a lot of kids that could have packed it in, and they just chose not to, and when Bush came to show, they got it done. It was great. Just a last piece for you to consider, most of these textbooks that, that you have the sheet on and are up here, are textbooks that are 15, 20, 25 years old. I did bring some in, Ron, if you want to look at the introduction to livestock and companion animals, but the one that they've been using is 1996, and so there's just, there's no comparison. The first chapter of the other one is biotechnology and animal science, and so, so we had to update those. Everything we're doing is classroom sets and online access for kids, so they can do it at home. The other one was Small Animal Care and Management, was from 1995, a little bit different, 2017-18. If anybody wants to take this monster home, you know, that's a 22-year-old book, that we need a 2018 version, and that's the automotive, there's 20, we're just getting 20 of them for each classroom, and so the kids will have access. The one that's at your places is always the one that, when you adopt a health book, that's the one that you have to be ready, and I have to be ready to answer questions about. By law, all these books, anything that we get that's new, not an update, but anything we get that's new has to be on public display. We're presenting it to you tonight. Our health book hasn't been updated in a long time. I, again, we, sorry to go there, but we've really been on a shoestring textbook budget for a long time. When our teachers get, get out of 20 and 25-year-old books and the product they produce, the health book is an absolute must. It's a 2018 version. There are laws that are passed every year or two that you have to include this in your health curriculum, you have to add this piece, you know, so our teachers are always scrambling, well, I've got to find an article online, I have to find this. This is 2018, this has everything updated. The, this company produces two books, one's called Comprehensive Health, and the other's Essential. Comprehensive is more progressive, much more detailed, much more graphic in the sex ed chapters. This is, this is conservative, but everything that legally needs to be covered, it's covered here, it's presented. So I encourage you to take that one, take a look at it. In the folders that I put at your places, there's a link to the online site where you can get in and actually see some of the teachers' material that are there, and then I also threw in the latest Illinois state guidelines on sex ed. It's non-regulatory, which means you don't, you don't have to fully follow it, but I want you, you should know, this is what's expected in a modern health class. The prices that we get on these are great, I'll share those with you as we, as we get into the process of adopting. But for the next month, I encourage you to take a look at the health, both online and here, because that is the one that rightfully so parents will want to take a look at. I think this is a very safe, good, fair book. Any questions on it?
Tim, where are the districts going? I mean, it's 2017, it's great to buy textbooks, but with so many things being online, you know, the expensive textbooks, do we take that money and put it more in the technology budget and eventually get a one-to-one device down the road, or where?
That's the goal. We won't buy one textbook now that doesn't have an online component, and what, what most places are doing now is they're calling it a bundle, that for 20 extra dollars, you get the hardcover book and it's a six-year license for the current textbook, so when it's an online book, they can update, you know, in a click, and next year, you've got the 2019 version. So we won't even look at a book that doesn't have the online, but until, until the students have a device in their hands, we still have to have a class set that they can use. But that's the two, three-year goal, is to go fully online and not be any more hardcover books.
And then also, if we're putting something new in the curriculum and we have to put it on display, but now the teacher pulls something out, the internet, and gives it to the class, is that to be reviewed?
It's up to the department chairs, and we would hope that that happens. If it doesn't, I usually get a phone call, and then I go visit somebody, so.
Thank you.
Just curious, if you can give a very brief description of how the decision, decision process in choosing Goodheart Wilcox, basically, to publish all these books, is the gold standard?
They're, they're outstanding, and they're local, and we, we like their materials. Like, these old animal science books are theirs. We just want the new versions, our teachers like that. Our, our older health book didn't compare at all to what's available here, and so, so our, our teachers have a set of five on an institute day that they look and pass around, but this is by far, for the price and the quality, this is, this is the best choice.
The five essentials survey, so that's 80, 90% response rate? Is that done just one time a year?
It's, there's a window, like in October to December, and yeah, we, we had asked, could we push it back to second semester when the kids know they're building a little bit better, and I had to, so.
And it just covers like classroom-type questions?
Yeah, and I can send you, I can send you links, so that you can see all 78 questions or so that are on there, but it's, it's pretty detailed. It's done online, so you get pretty instant access, but those, the results this year are as good or better than they were when the kids were scattered in the four schools.
What is the cool process for the books?
You take a look at it, nothing we need to do tonight, but we bring it back and say, if, if there's no objections, we'd like to order this book. The only, the only brand-new book is the health book. Everything else is just an update of a book we've used for a while, so that would be at the June board meeting.
I can still take the animal book with me though.
You absolutely can, but the health books I won't manage, I don't think.
So you got your name, Maria, then?
Yes.
All right. Thanks. Next is Community Relations Goal Number Two.
So I'm just here to update you, Community Relations Goal Number Two. The one I'm reporting on is being here, coordinate events to recognize the high achievement of district students. We've done that in many ways. This is just this past semester here, so asset meetings, we hold monthly meetings with activity coordinators, local clergy, feeder districts, forest preserves, other nonprofits, and we discuss the asset program, which is our character-building program. Spring assemblies are just a way to instill pep and spirit in our student bodies. Each of the schools did one of those this year. It's really cool, like even here, you can see the kids perform, they get up and showcase their talents. We recognize athletes, academics, every, we cover everything there. Third is Academic Honors Nights, where we obviously recognize students, the presence of their family and friends for their academic achievement. Next is Sealed by Literacy. That's just grown each and every year. Our language department is phenomenal. Kids have to demonstrate literacy and speakability, what's the word?
Fluency.
Fluency, there we go. I go brain. In a certain language and English. And then National Signing Days occur at each of the schools, where the students commit to play sports at the collegiate level. And then lastly, oh no, Cadets of the Quarter. That recognizes cadets in the JROTC program who have done well throughout the quarter. They go through a grilling process, which I observed, and it's terrifying. They, they do very well, they get completely dressed in their uniforms. Sorry, words are hard at this point. And they get up and they answer questions about different things that the board asks them, they're rated on four different things, and then they come back with a final consensus about for the cadets of the third, one for first, second, third, and fourth year. Lastly, it's Scholarship Nights, which you all have attended throughout last week and this week. They're phenomenal. I am putting together a press release right now. I know we're over 300,000 from just local community members, and then when you factor in the full rides of military academies and things like that, I think we're going to be probably over a million this year, so. Press releases to recognize student accomplishment. This is data that I pulled from April 10th to May 10th, just to get a month's worth of data. Thirty-two press releases were sent out, and they were picked up by the Herald News, 22nd Century Media Publications, radio stations like WJOL and River, and the Daily South Town. And then lastly, social media as another way to recognize our students for their accomplishments. We posted 368 social media posts in the last month, that's across Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. In Facebook alone, we reached over 200,000 people, which elicited over 13,000 clicks, which is an average of 98 clicks per post. This is tons of data, sorry if I'm bony, but it's very interesting to me, because I get to monitor it on a monthly basis and see what performs the best. And 4,600 comments and shares, which is an average of 33 reactions per post. And then in terms of Instagram, we had 9,695 reactions, which constitutes as a comment, a video view, or a like. Video is definitely the biggest growth on social media, so we'll focus on that as we move forward.
So which one is eliciting the best results? Facebook, Instagram, or?
You know, it depends, because we target different, different audiences on each. Our Facebook following is the largest, at around 4,400, I believe, right now, and that's mostly parents who are following us. About 5% of students are on Facebook. It's considered like the old people thing, so, and I, I enjoy... in the full rides of military academies and things like that, I, I think we're going to be probably over a million this year, so. Press releases to recognize student accomplishment. This is data that I pulled from April 10th to May 10th, just to get a month's worth of data. Thirty-two press releases were sent out, and they were picked up by the Herald News, 22nd Century Media Publications, radio stations like WJOL and River, and the Daily South Town. And then lastly, social media as another way to recognize our students for their accomplishments. We posted 368 social media posts in the last month. That's across Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. In Facebook alone, we reached over 200,000 people, which elicited over 13,000 clicks, which is an average of 98 clicks per post. This is tons of data, sorry if I'm bony, but it's very interesting to me because I get to monitor it on a monthly basis and see what performs the best. And 4,600 comments and shares, which is an average of 33 reactions per post. And then in terms of Instagram, we had 9,695 reactions, which constitutes as a comment, a video view, or a like. Video is definitely the biggest growth on social media, so we'll focus on that as we move forward.
So which one is eliciting the best results? Facebook, Instagram, or?
Um, you know, it depends, because we target different, different audiences on each. Our Facebook following is the largest, at around 4,400, I believe, right now. And that's mostly parents who are following us. About 5% of students are on Facebook. It's considered like the old people thing. So, and I, I enjoy it, so I'm getting there. And then Instagram, if you ask kids where they are now, really, it's Instagram and Snapchat. Instagram just released a feature, however, that's similar to Snapchat. I personally think it's going to take out Snapchat. It's basically the same thing, just all in one app. So I haven't put as much effort into Snapchat yet, because I, I really think it's, they made a mistake by not selling to Facebook, but that's my own personal opinion, so. Any other questions?
Do you or Dr. Murphy do like a Google analytical to see how many gets on the website, or how many debt service levels they go into?
So Cat Chauncey just started that, just added that as a.
We want to get a count for name.
Yeah, I mean, it's good to see everybody goes to the homepage, but to see how far they go in, and where they go in, and what they're looking at, hopefully board docs and.
Yep. That's it?
Listen, Tim wants to update us on his vice president. All right, thank you. Just got to get that back to Ron. All right, next was our five-year financial forecast. Well, I just think the hardest part is behind me. It's a privilege to be here tonight, walk through the five-year financial forecast, and provide a look at the financial roadmap ahead for the district. Please, as I proceed through this presentation, feel free to stop me and ask the questions that might come to your mind. I'd like tonight's presentation to be meant to be an interactive process filled with discussion. Now please note, during this process, we met with several different of the departments, reviewed their budgets and current operations, and I want to thank all of them for the time they helped me getting up to speed with the district's financials. And another note, the Five Cast, we will continue to update it, but it will become the roadmap for the 2018 budget. It does include all funds, as I felt as we looked through it, it was important. Debt service funds sometimes is or is not included, but in this case, it paints a material picture to where the district is going and is needed to be included. It does not include the proposed land sales, as these are one-time revenue sources, and at the end, long-term, will have effect on the district's fund balance, but will not have a, a effect on the district's budget as far as revenue projections, since we will not project them in the future. However, if the board desires, we can include them in the projections moving forward. So the five-year financial forecast, or what I like to call the Five Cast for short, is a comprehensive, interactive planning tool that the district will start using in the budget development process, tax levy determination, and general, general planning. This interactive model is based on hundreds of assumptions that affect the model's output. As you know, the longer the planning horizon, the less certain the results will be, affect of the district's financials, as things are continuing to change or evolve. This interactive planning tool, though, can be used to develop what-if scenarios based on different assumptions. We will, however, tonight, only look at one assumption, which we call the base model, but could develop other assumptions in the future. For example, what impact would have a property tax freeze have on the district? What the Five Cast is not, it is not a static document that will remain unchanged in the future. In fact, the Five Cast model needs to be an ever-evolving model, or it will become worthless in guiding the district's financial future. It is not meant to replace the monthly cash flow analysis, as it really is used to provide a big picture into the district's cash flow needs, and help us take a look at our TAWs, Tax Anticipate Warrants. But we will still need to be diligent with our monthly cash flows. The five-year financial projections are developed based on the data elements listed on the slide, as provided by the district, the PMA, which is loaded then into the Five Cast, Five Cast software. The Five Cast software has two major calculators that use historical data and current input assumptions to calculate 80% of the revenue and 60% of the expenditures. The remaining revenue and expenditures are adjusted or modeled by manual input based on the appropriate assumptions. For example, student fees. Student fees were adjusted in the model based on estimated enrollment and the approved fee, and approved fees as recently set by the Board of Education. The district's total revenue for all funds for fiscal year 17's original budget is graphically displayed here on the screen. As you can see from this graph, the district is very dependent on local property taxes, about 75% of all revenue. And it is projected to become more dependent on them in the future, nearly 81% by 2022. The district's current original budget is a key building block for the forecast, and is assumed to be accurately reflecting district operations. While preparing the Five Cast, we reexamine most of the assumptions within the current budget and found them to be valid. Please note, the early analysis indicates that the district is trending under or below the expenditure budgets. This has not been accounted for within the model, but the actual 2016, 17 information will be updated when we do a update to the board in October, when we have the known The district levies two types of taxes: operating tax levy, which is capped by PTEL, and the debt service levy, which is not capped. The property, the property tax extension limit law, or PTEL, limits the increase in our operating tax levy to the lesser of 5% or the Consumer Price Index for the prior December, and the tax on new property, or what we refer to as new growth tax. For example, in 2016, tax levy was based on the December CPI of .7. The debt service tax levy, which is set as part of the bond referendum, and is automatically levied each year unless abated by the Board of Education. The change in the Consumer Price Index of CPI is the single largest revenue assumption within the Five Cast model, since it controls an estimated, the estimated increase in 75% of the district revenue. That's right, 75%. So this is a key indicator. For fiscal year 18, the district will rely on 50% approximately of the 2016 tax levy, which was set in December of 2016, and 50% of the 2017 tax levy, which has not been set, but is estimated on the December 2016 CPI of 2.1. Listed on the screen is the actual CPI for the last seven years, the green bars, and the CPI assumptions built into the model for future tax levies, the blue bars. For levy years 18 and 19, they are based on the Wall Street Journal Economic Forecast. For years beyond that are based on historical average. As a side note, April 30th, 2017, year-over-year change in CPI was 2.2%, which is down from the March, which was 2.4%. The second key factor in predicting revenue for the district is new growth in property values. For 2016, the district had 63 million of new property, which will generate an additional 1.06 million in new tax revenue. Within the model, we are projecting new property growth to flatten in the future, the blue lines here, since it is very difficult to predict new property growth, as existing neighborhoods finish and they begin to open up new neighborhoods. In 2008, the district hit an estimated 218 million of new property growth high point. Based on these two largest factors, the CPI and new property growth, the district is expecting its aggregate tax levy, including debt service, to increase to over 100 million by levy year 2021. The district is projecting that the property values, or EAV, will continue to recover in the future, which will result in an operating tax rate levy remaining flat, the yellow bars here, see, flattening out. However, our total tax rate will increase based on our current increasing debt payment, that's the orange bars. Other local revenue has been adjusted to reflect estimates from the Department of Revenue, board approvals, or current budget levels. State and federal revenue. General state aid is based on our latest enrollment projections from our feeder districts, the estimated EAVs I just spoke of, and plus a whole climate provision, which is providing $433,000 to the district annual. As the, our equal access values continue to strengthen with declining enrollment, the district's local resources per student will exceed the 93% of foundation level per pupil for, of the foundation level. The district will slowly become an alternate formula district, which means that's where local resources will start to be between 93% of the district foundation level, or the state foundation level, up to 175% of the foundation level. As an alternate formula provides between 7% to 5% of the foundation level, or about $428 to $305 per average daily attendance. And as you know, the current foundation level from the state of Illinois is $6,119 and has been for several years. Based on the model's projections, we are anticipating about a 25% decrease, or 1.35 million less in general state aid for 2018. All other state and federal grants are estimated at the current budget levels, with the exception of Title I, which is being reduced, since the fiscal year 17 budget includes a one-time reallocation from the state of Illinois. Based on the data from the feeder districts, our enrollments is projected to decline over the next five years by an estimated 6% or about 421 students. While the decline in enrollment has been factored into our general state aid, the model assumes flat staffing to ensure adequate staffing at all high school levels. This is a graphic display of the district's projected revenue by major revenue source. Based on all the aforementioned assumptions, the district is expecting local revenue to grow to an estimated 81%, the green bars, of the total revenue by 2022, as the district moves from our general state aid foundation-level district to an alternate formula. Total revenue is expected to exceed about 122 million by 2022. Sensitivity analysis. Given all the changing environment, it is prudent that we should investigate the sensitivity of the assumptions within the model, and determine the impact of any one change has on the model. Because literally, we could run thousands of what-if scenarios to try and model all the possible assumption changes. This sensitivity analysis is important, because it helps us understand how an individual assumption will impact a five-year financial forecast. The largest three assumptions are listed on the screen and control 80% of the district's revenue. 80%. For example, we estimated that for 2018, the tax levy CPI would be 2.4. But what would be the impact on the model if it really was 1.4? Well, this would result in a $664,000 of less tax revenue, then projected for levy year 18 and forward. Just as with revenue, the original budget for 17 is a key building block for the expenditure forecast. As this chart indicates, salaries and benefits make up about 61% of the district's expenditures, so assumptions around salaries and benefits are paramount within the expenditure projections. Also, please note that debt service accounts for about 15% currently of the district's total expenditures, and are within the other object. Now, some of you might be saying right now, but I've always heard people say that salaries and benefits are about 80% of our expenditures. This would be true if we were looking at only the education fund. But when we throw in debt service, operation and maintenance, which includes the capital repairs to buildings, that's what dilutes it down, and this is why it's only 61% when we look across all funds. If we were looking at just education, you would be in that 70-some to 80% range, and I, I could look at and give that number to you. All salary and benefit assumptions are based on actual individual staff contracts. I can't say that enough. We spend, I felt like Rob and I are becoming best buddies. We spend quite a bit of time going over these staffing numbers, and so we've spent a considerable amount of time going through every one of the contracts. And we've adjusted those for known retirements, which is critical, through 19. We then also then adjusted for historical changes and/or as determined by the Board of Education. As I mentioned earlier, all staffing has been held flat, but will be adjusted as the enrollment projections are updated, or as future staffing plans are actually developed. Based on a flat staffing and all other aforementioned salary and benefit assumptions, the district expects salaries and benefits to reach 65.6 million by 2022. In tonight's packet was several documents. One of those documents is this very detailed, well, I say very detailed, but I prepared it. So very detailed assumption chart, which gives you all the different assumptions built into the model. So that's there in the packets for your reference. This model, though, projects no legislative change in the general state aid formula, or PTEL, such as a property tax freeze, et cetera. Now, we could model different things if we have known legislative concerns. Known teacher retirements have been budgeted at a replacement at MA Step 4. And finally, well, Ari said, we provided that detailed reference sheet for you in the This graphically, this graph displays the district's projected expenditures by major type. Based on all the aforementioned assumptions, the district is expecting total expenditures to exceed 117.3 million by 2022. However, since the largest projected increase is related to the district's bond payments, the red section you can see there, well, it kind of looks orange on that screen, which are estimated, which are scheduled, I should say, to increase, if we do not do anything different, from 15 million to 24 million by 2022. The sensitivity analysis, just like with the revenue ones, and would be, I'd be glad to calculate more if somebody has some more we want to put up here, are important for us to understand that how each one of the assumptions affects the model. The largest two assumptions are listed here on, on the screen. So for example, if salaries change by plus or minus 1% more or less than projected, that would cost us $516,000. Finally, all of the assumptions are accumulated into individual fund pro formas, which are finally aggregated into one final projected summary, which appears here as a reading chart. And the detailed pro formas are included in your board package. Please note that these projections here include the debt service. This chart graphically displays This chart graphically displays the accumulated fund balance for all funds, which is the red line, plus the district's estimated low point, which is the purple line. Now, I want to caution, this model assumes payment history based on historical averages. We know right now the state's not paying on historical averages. So this line will be skewed, be higher, well, be, I'm sorry. Yes, will be higher than what probably is by our actuals, which is why it's so important we continue our monthly cash flow analysis. And then finally, you will see that our fund balances are growing. But part of this is to do with the fact that you levy in advance for your debt service payments. And so we are collecting additional funds as we levy in advance for those increasing payments. In a few slides, you will see we will remove the debt service fund to examine operations only. This is the graphical display of the estimated total surpluses for all funds for the next five years. This is the district's estimated ending fund balance for all funds over the next five years. Now, this summary includes all funds except for debt service. So we can more closely examine our district operations and remove the impact of the debt service. Saying here, this is district representation of the district's operating fund balance. And we know it's beginning to be restored, resulting in a less reliance on tax anticipation warrants over the future and beginning to have a stronger financial position. The fund balance is projected to go to 13.7 million, which you'll notice is almost back to the 19.9 million, which we had in 2012. This represents a recovery of approximately 70% of the district's fund balance over the next five years. The district is projecting operating surpluses over the next five years to strengthen the district's financial position, which will begin to restore the district's credit rating. The district is projected increased fund balances of over $12 million over the next five years while providing adequate financial resources for our students. And with that, I will entertain any additional questions.
I have a very simple one. You included retirements out for the next two years, but I would suspect we have all that information for the next five years, do we not?
Well, I can certainly follow up with Rob on that. We were able to get in two years because two years is the actual contracts we loaded and went through. And that was quite a job. So we need to go out five years. We would need to load up more of the contracts. But yes, we can certainly look at that.
The next two years are significant. Two significant years. We're using the Wall Street Journal for the CPI assumptions.
That is correct.
About 2.4 and 2.32.
Correct.
For the next two years. How accurate has the Wall Street Journal been in the past? Because I think you said that's the biggest key indicator. So.
Right.
Big, big, close?
Honestly, it's been a mixed bag. If you go out there and look to see where their range of projections and what they've actually, you know, I mean, I could put it on a future one. But where they actually hit, sometimes they're very close, sometimes they're not as close. I don't know if I dare want to, whoops. Well, I shouldn't have done that, that's for sure. One of the things, well, I don't know if I can go back to that slide or not. But, let's just get that. Actually, we'll go right there. One of the things, though, that I want to speak to about that. Okay, so yes, the Consumer Price Index, the Wall Street Journal, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. But it's at least a good economic, something for us to hang our hats on. The most important thing, though, to understand is, so if you look at the 2.1, that's going to be for 2017, we're going to be, that's already a known number because it's based on 2016. So for the near-future budget, which we're going to prepare this fall, it's going to be based on two really known numbers. It's only really we get 19 and going out on the projections. So yes, it's an important part on the projections. But when it comes down to the individual budget, it's a known number for us. So that's critical. And then the other thing is just remember that sensitivity analysis. It's 664,000 when we're off a whole percent. Well, we're not going to be off a whole percent. We may be off a half a percent. But it's rare that we'll be that far off. And we'll be updating that as we go. So by the time it really comes to be a budget item for us, it will already have been known. So we've known, you know, several months now what the December was.
Have we plugged in any numbers yet? If there are changes to the GSA formula?
Well, that would be some what-if scenarios we could model out. Right? So the most difficult for us to model, because there's still a lot of, you know, question how it's really going to go. But I really don't see any change to the GSA. What I see is coming out with this evidence-based funding. And we already are hearing that at the very minimum, they're saying on the evidence-based funding, there's going to be a per pupil hold harmless. So I think we can kind of be rest assured we're going to get, you know, hold harmless there to the, now, who knows what they pick? If they pick 15 or they pick 16, that's, you know, to be determined. But I think that's about the most we can know off of that. However, though, early indications on the evidence-based model did project positive for the district. So I think that's a good thing, a positive note. So we'll see how it shakes out. But that's where I really think the state's moving, is this evidence-based funding model.
Question, you mentioned it specifically a couple times. You showed a pretty dramatic drop in enrollment.
Right.
Or at least over the last decade, but coming over the next five years. But no real change have led in some of the expenditures associated with the decline in enrollment. Can you explain why?
Yes. And since I hit exit on this, I won't touch my screen. Okay, so you'll find that, all right, fine. Okay, so I think the most critical thing in looking at these financials is, you know, I always say we want these financials to be conservatively as accurate as possible. So on the revenue side, we want to factor in declining enrollment because we know it's going to affect our GSA. On the expenditure side, so we don't want to overstate our revenues. We want to make sure that whatever we're projecting is something that when we come back and as we get closer, if anything, our revenue looks stronger, not weaker. So we're going to be a little conservative on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, though, I don't want to use the word aggressive, but on the same token, we know that while our feeder districts are showing us, okay, we have some decline in enrollment, we also know that housing is coming back. And so we're having people start to move in. So we've held the staffing flat because even though we're showing losing some different kids, that might not result in actual class size, you know, change. Okay, we're able to eliminate this section or whatever. And going across three different buildings, you know. So we're going to be conservative on holding flat staffing because we want to make sure that we're not in a pinch and trying to provide staffing. So if it comes out that we're three or four teachers that we could actually, or less, okay, that's going to be great. But the last thing we want to do is be going into section and be going, oh, my gosh, we need three more teachers and we didn't budget for that. And it's not in the forecast. And, you know, and now we're, you know, we got to do the right thing and staff appropriately. So that's a philosophy being, you know, on the revenue versus expenditure.
So what's the next step?
Well, here's the next step. So coming off of here tonight, what we'll do is we will take out this data, which we've been collecting. This data will really become the stepping stone for us building the '18 budget. Now, we will have actual known data from different things. If anything changed in '17, like we come under budget on this or whatever. But even in this five cast, like we took a look at like our transportation rotation for buses. So we built that in. We took a look at our, you know, proposed five-year capital improvement plan. So a lot of these things are already built in. But now this becomes our building block for the '18 budget. We'll come back, we'll refine tune it as necessary, and we'll come back to the board with a final '18 budget. As soon as the '18 budget's adopted, we will come back, we will update the five cast, and we'll be right back to the board in October to lay out, okay, now here's the new look. And every time we can come back with an update, it's just going to get stronger and tighter. And, you know, it's going to be just better. And so we're going to come right back in October because we're going to need to have that to look at. Okay, what do we need to do about TAWs? What do we do about tax levy? All of these things. And this will be the document that we can work on and be the roadmap. And we'll just constantly continue to update that. Then in January, we'll update it again as soon as we get the new CPI number. So once we got the CPI number, we'll be back here in February, most likely, giving you an update, saying here's where we're at. That's the one, what we come up with February will be the roadmap. We'll begin to build the '19 budget as we begin to go into staffing and blah, blah. And the process just never stops. So that's the process, so.
One more question?
No problem. It's been easy.
Were there any big aha moments when you were going through this five-year projection that you saw that as a district? I know you're a fresh set of eyes. That we should then start to drill down on? Maybe become either more efficient? Revenue opportunities within maybe?
Well, on the revenue side, I was just absolutely shocked. When I first inputted all the data and started going through and ran the first model, I couldn't even believe the output. I was like, this can't even be possible. But the GSA is dropping so bad. I mean, I just couldn't understand how this could even be possible. And then I started digging into it and looking into it. And I was, it was really surprised. Now, whether we actually slip into an alternate formula will depend on revenue, or I'm sorry, the EAV growth and our enrollment. Now, if our enrollment stays strong and our EAV is weaker than I think, well, then we could end up staying in a flat or a foundation formula. But if that was, on the revenue side, that was the biggest aha for me. I couldn't even believe it, that we could be going into an alternate district or alternate formula, given the situation. As far as expenditures, we're really, I'm just really getting acclimated with the district. I mean, I've got like some list of things for just start investigating. But I'll share all those with you once we start the investigations. But, you know, I did, a few things jumped out and I said, okay, we'll take a look. We just see what's going on. Maybe not what I've been accustomed to. Not saying it's right or wrong, but I certainly wanted to dig into them.
When is the next question? When will we start to hear some of your observations in a little more?
Yeah, when we come back in October with the updated five-year financial, I'll be prepared to start laying out some of the things that I feel like is under, you know, things that we're looking at, things that we need to discuss and have an action plans on.
On the five, on the five cast.
Well, and things for improvement. So when we come back in October, I want to say, okay, look, I'd be glad to say to you, look, I've been more investigation on item A, and I think it warrants more investigation. Just giving you a heads up. This is something we're going to be investigating. At this point, I'm just really getting acclimated. But, you know, there's a couple of things. Like you said, it's a fresh set of eyes. And I just like, I've not done it that way. Not saying it's wrong or right, but that's not what I'm accustomed to. So that's on my list of, let's investigate.
He hasn't received a paycheck yet. But I know one of the things we're going to look at is, you know, we've already talked about our leasing structure for our buses. We understand why we got into that structure in the first place. But with some room in the future, there may be opportunities to change our format. That's one of the things Brad will look at here in the first 100 days in terms of, is our structure and what's best for the long haul? I know that would be one of the first items.
I will just note that, you know, on my first 100 days, I'm still in the negative because that means start of day one. A lot of gold has already met on that 100-day plan. So we'll check that off for tonight. It's a negative day 43, I think. So here we go.
Any other questions?
Well, I just can't emphasize enough that this five-year financial forecast is a living, breathing document and will constantly be, every three to four months, be updating it with you and be adjusting it for known changes, changes in the environment, whatever's happening. And this will be our roadmap for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. Now, if I could even get this technology.
Okay. It's the second 100 days.
Well, how about that? Okay.
Perfect. We'll move on to the next agenda item. We're into the action items. First action item is presentation of invoices for April 2017. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the outstanding invoices in the amount of $1,296,371.31 dated May 18, 2017.
Where's the second? Any discussion? Very non-roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass?
Aye.
Mr. Bucetti?
Aye.
Mr. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Lulo?
Aye.
Mr. Janet?
Aye.
Ms. Janice Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Kirk from that side?
Aye.
Next, approval of treasurer's report for April 2017. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Go move.
Okay, motion is there, second?
Second.
Opened by Member Lulo. Discussion.
So just a few highlights for the month of April for our April financial statements and treasurer's report. You know, as we've been discussing over the last several months, our operating revenues continue to run behind mainly because of the delay of the statement dated Categoricals. But we did receive our first set of 2017 Categoricals in April as was reported last month that we thought that we would get those. And we actually did for total payments of $892,903.77. As I also reported last month, you know, we've been told that this will be the last set of payments that we'll get this year. So they will still owe us December, March, and then June as of January. So it'll leave us with about $2.5 million, a little bit over $2.5 million owed to us. Our operating expenses have continued to decline. So we are continuing to look pretty good. Our actual operating expenditures fiscal year date are $4.3 million less than the prior fiscal year date through April.
Questions for the company about the treasurer's report in general? Or if you can ask it at the front. The big land sales are, did one occur in April or were they both in May?
Close one in April. We closed the other one in this year.
How did that flow?
So the land sales are included. You can see that in the financial statements, land sale. I should say, although there's escrow money from the other sale that just closed this week. If you see in our O and M fund, we showed the land sale as part of revenues as a line item, a separate line item, that 1.3 million. But then backed it out at the bottom so that we show our surplus with and without the land sale on there. Because on our AFR, our land sale, you know, it's going to help with our financial profile calculation, but it's still going to be below the line revenue source and won't be included as part of our normal operation surplus.
The last footnote on the treasurer's report, the April cash flows also account for held accounts, payable checks, and number of funds the checks will be released in May.
Yes. So in April, we, once you approved the invoice listing in April, we held those checks just through our first payroll in May and through the closing of the TAWs, just to make sure that nothing fell through with that. It's similar to what we've been doing with our insurance payments. So we held those checks. We cut everything. They were included in expenditures in April, but we just held them just like how we've been holding our insurance checks. There were some vendors where we needed to send those checks out, and we sent those out in order to avoid late fees. But the majority were just sent out last week. And so you can see that in the cash flows. If you look at our Ed Fund and Operation Maintenance Fund or Transportation Fund, there's a separate line item in there this month for the checks that were held from our April bills. And that was just done to be extremely conservative since the closing of the TAWs wasn't happening until May.
When do we expect to receive the first? Tax payment?
May 25.
Any other questions? Very good. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Huchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kostic.
Aye.
Mr. Lulo.
Aye.
Mr. Janik.
Aye.
Ms. Janice Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Kirk.
Aye.
Next, approval of student activities report for April 2017. Entertained a motion? Motion, second? Second? You have a second? Discussion.
In your materials, I've included, once again, any of the accounts that were negative at the month, at month end of April. We have five accounts that were negative as of the end of the month. Three of them were just for the timing differences. And as of the date of this memo, the class of 2017 account at Central had been resolved. I actually think the boys' water polo was also resolved as of today. There is also a request for a new account at West Gamers Club. They'll be doing some fundraising and, you know, some small expenditures. And they just requested a separate account to be able to track that activity. But other than that, Student Activity Fund is pretty status quo for the month of April.
Questions? Is there any progress on the class of accounts? Are we going to be accounting issue?
You know, I haven't revisited those at all. We did have, after that meeting, several classes who called us, and they wanted their balances to be paid out. So we did cut some checks out of there. So I don't, I think that's, it's gone down a little bit. But I think that's a determination that, you know, the board probably has to make and in consultation with the administration and everything and determining how we should deal with those remaining class of account balances.
I haven't added all those numbers up, but do you have the ballpark?
Um, I haven't done it in a while, since January, when I, when I did all of that. I apologize.
That's okay, no, I didn't need to hurry up.
No, that's fine. I can email that to you if you want.
I'm just looking at it too. It's not complicated.
No, it's not. Just, it's just money that kind of sits there, so.
Any other questions? Very good. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Huchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kostic.
Aye.
Mr. Lulo.
Aye.
Mr. Janik.
Aye.
Ms. Janice Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Kirk.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, personnel report. A motion to accept the personnel report for employment?
Second.
I know, yeah.
Okay, personnel report on our employment. Kathryn Quas has accepted the position of head sponsor for the junior class at Lincoln Way West High School for the 2017-2018 school year. Jesse Miller has accepted the head sponsor position for the National Honor Society at Lincoln Way West for the 2017-2018 school year. Dan Schwartz, teacher of Special Services Department, has accepted a full-time position for the 2017-2018 school year. Ashley Sturba, teacher of Family Consumer Science Department, has accepted a full-time position for the 2017-2018 school year. Brian K. Willis, Jr., social worker, has accepted a recall to a full-time position for the 2017-2018 school year. I ask the board to approve these employment recommendations as presented.
Motion, assume the second still stands.
Sure.
Any questions? Very good. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Huchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kostic.
Aye.
Mr. Lulo.
Aye.
Mr. Janik.
Aye.
Ms. Janice Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Kirk.
Aye.
Personnel report under retirements. Mary Corianic, computer technician in the Technology Department, requests to retire under the IRMEC retirement system effective May 24, 2017. I ask the board to approve this retirement as presented.
Entertained a motion on this report?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? Very good. Roll call.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Huchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kostic.
Aye.
Mr. Lulo.
Aye.
Mr. Janik.
Aye.
Ms. Janice Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Kirk.
Aye.
Personnel report under leaves. Samantha Corzen, teacher of Special Services Department at Lincoln Way West High School, requests a one-year sabbatical for the 2017-2018 school year. Megan Wells, teacher in the Transition Program of Special Services at Lincoln Way Central High School, is requesting a six-week FMLA leave at the conclusion of her maternity leave beginning of the 2017-2018 school year. I ask for to approve these leaves as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Huchetti.
Aye.
Ms. Janice Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Janik.
Aye.
Mr. Kostic.
Aye.
Mr. Lulo.
Aye.
Mr. Kirk.
Aye.
Personnel report on resignations and other business. Joshua Cobza, security guard for Maintenance and Grounds at Lincoln Way East High School, requests to resign from his position on May 16, 2017. Emma Romanek-Lucas, paraprofessional at Lincoln Way Central High School, requests to resign from her position on May 5, 2017. Scott McQuarrie, full-time dean at Lincoln Way Central High School, requests to resign his dean's position at the conclusion of 2016-2017 school year. Kami Oler, library clerk at Lincoln Way West High School, requests to resign on May 17, 2017. Sarah Pavlik, key club sponsor at Lincoln Way West High School, requests to resign from her position at the conclusion of 2016-2017 school year. Christine Petrofsky, social worker at Lincoln Way West High School, requests to resign her position at the conclusion of 2016-2017 school year. Also, as the assistant girls' golf coach at Lincoln Way West High School, requests to resign her coaching position at the conclusion of 2016-2017 school year. Jeremy Vestal, paraprofessional at Lincoln Way East High School, requests to resign his position on April 21, 2017. And Haley Wade-Fort, paraprofessional at Lincoln Way East High School, requests to resign her position at the conclusion of the 2016-2017 school year. Under other business, Patricia Cleaver, cafeteria worker at Lincoln Way West High School, recommended her full status employment as she has successfully completed her 90-day probationary period. U McCorkle, security guard at Lincoln Way East High School, recommended her full status employment as he has successfully completed his 90-day probationary period. And Russ Tholen, custodian, Lincoln Way West High School, recommended for full status employment as he has successfully completed his 90-day probationary period. I ask the board to approve these personnel recommendations as presented.
We're going to entertain a motion on this report?
So moved.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Very good. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Huchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kostic.
Aye.
Mr. Lulo.
Aye.
Mr. Janik.
Aye.
Ms. Janice Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Kirk.
Aye.
Next action item. Prove proposed school handbook changes.
These were presented to the board at the last meeting. These came through District 210 Advisory. Dr. Maholic presented those changes at the last meeting. If there are no questions regarding clarification, I'd ask that you approve the handbook changes as presented.
We have a motion to approve the handbook changes as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any additional discussion? None? Call for roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Huchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kostic.
Aye.
Mr. Lulo.
Aye.
Mr. Janik.
Aye.
Ms. Janice Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Kirk.
Aye.
Next is the adoption of location dates and times of District 210 Board meetings.
There was, I know there's been some discussion amongst the board meeting, board members in terms of scheduling for next year. After some discussion, what I would propose would be a third Thursday of every month. In addition, we would host a board workshop meeting on August 31. That workshop, that, that meeting would focus solely on building of the budget, explanation of the budget. October 5 would be an additional meeting with a tax levy, an update on the five-year capital improvement plan, and then an update in the Five Cast financial projections. So that'd be an additional meeting. November 4, that would be a Saturday morning. We would like to get the strategic planning group back together. We can send out a save the date in July, bring those people together on Saturday in November, cover what progress we've made in each, in each area over the last 12 months, and then look for suggestions on, on moving forward and kind of an update. We would then on January 25, host our State of the District, where we would review with the community and update on our strategic plan as well as various district information. We would want an additional, we'd recommend an additional meeting March 1 to update the Five Cast financial projections, and then set parameters for fiscal year 19 once we know the Consumer Price Index and any pending legislation also. So we would look at an addition of one, two, three, five additional meetings with the monthly meeting. The December meeting would be the second Thursday as to not run into holiday time. But after some discussion, I think this would be a good starting point. We have, you know, Brad's an experienced director of finance. Kelly is an experienced director of finance. We're in a better place than we've been. We need to give them the opportunity to work, work through, have some time, and I know it's going to be a successful transition, but this would be my proposal to move forward for the year.
Do I have a motion to accept the current, the presented location dates and times for the District 210 Board meetings for the next 17, 18 years?
So moved.
Motion? Janik, motion, second. Kostic? Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glass.
Aye.
Mr. Huchetti.
Aye.
Mr. Kostic.
Aye.
Mr. Lulo.
Aye.
Mr. Janik.
Aye.
Ms. Janice Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Kirk.
Aye.
Next is prove technology purpose proposal. I will give a little lead in here. We were trying something a little different on this one where Brian Murphy had the presentation recorded. It was available as part of Board Docs. The board members had the opportunity to view the presentation. We're going to go ahead and show it tonight just so that the people that are here in attendance can see what will become available. Hopefully, this will become a best practice that we will have the information available not only to ourselves but to the community at large ahead of time. That way, if there are questions, if we need to research it, vet it a little bit, then that way, we're just not getting it at a board meeting, trying to digest it, and then make a decision to one of our fine speakers today so we can be more informed about what we're trying to do. So since this was the first time, I put Brian on the spot today, actually. Hey, Brian, you got to play your video for everybody in attendance. So if you want to.
And if I don't in advance, I brought popcorn for everyone. Enjoy the show. Here we go.
Hello. I'm Brian Murphy, Director of Technology for Lincoln Way High School District 210. I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss with you a couple of items that will be presented at the May 17 Board meeting. The first of which is bandwidth agreement. As part of our strategic plan developed by the community, we were charged with assessing and increasing the amount of bandwidth provided to the district. Currently, we have 500 megabits of bandwidth coming in. Prior to us going to Office 365 with the staff, we were maxing out at around 50% of our total utilization. Today, we're holding steady around 70% with all of our staff utilizing Office 365, which is our cloud-based email and storage. It's important to note that we're currently under contract with Comcast until the end of the 2017-2018 school year. If we were to leave Comcast, we would be subject to a cancellation fee of approximately $32,000. As we continue through this discussion today, please keep in mind that our current monthly charges with Comcast exceed $10,000. Another important note is that we're eligible for federal funding for E-Rate for our bandwidth. In order to maximize the amount of funding we receive, we've worked with our E-Rate consultant company, Telesolution Consultants. We've been working with this company for the last 10 years. This past year, we received approximately $50,000 in E-Rate funding. And then our consulting company gets a small percentage of our rebate as compensation. We're currently being funded at 40% of our eligible costs for E-Rate. So as our costs will continue to decrease, so will the funding we receive. With the assistance of our Telesolution Consultants, we received pricing from four different providers. The results are in your backup material. The request that was sent out was for two gigs of network bandwidth to Lincoln Way Central with a one-gig connection to both Lincoln Way East and Lincoln Way West. We also asked for 100-meg connection to our transportation center. This request was designed so that our network infrastructure would be able to handle an increase in bandwidth without replacing any equipment. As with most upgrades, an area of concern is whether the hardware will be able to handle all this increased traffic. We've consulted with a number of vendors and have determined that we can implement an upgrade without changing our current hardware. However, we will be putting our current hardware to its limits. We will be maxing out the amount of bandwidth that it is able to handle on the way in and what it is able to put out on the end. So we will continue to monitor this throughout the year, and we'll have a plan in place should we need to replace or upgrade the hardware. That would be included in next year's budget. After carefully reviewing all of the submissions, it was determined that Comcast would continue to provide Lincoln Way with the lowest cost for what our current environment can handle. The monthly charge from Comcast would be $6,086 and includes Central, East, West, and Transportation. We'd also need a small connection to Lincoln Way North for purposes of phones, cameras, security, et cetera. This connection would be $414 a month and is the same as the connection that's being provided to the transportation center. The total monthly recurring cost to Comcast would then be approximately $3,500 less than what we're currently paying. So a total of $6,500 a month. what we're currently paying, so a total of $6,500 a month. If you guys have any questions, please don't hesitate to give me a call. I can discuss this in further detail if necessary. Another charge of the strategic plan was to improve the ratio of devices to end users, more specifically to purchase teacher devices that support a blended learning environment and provide teachers with current technology. Over the past year, we've worked with a number of vendors and a number of different devices. As you can see behind me here, they range from Chromebooks to Mapbooks and everything in between. All of these devices have been put in the hands of our teachers to allow their input in assisting making a final decision on what device we should go with. This process narrowed down to three different laptops. I'll show them to you here. This is a Lenovo 260, a Lenovo N23, and a Lenovo 11E. The most common feature between all of these devices is the ability to convert from a laptop to a tablet. Being able to move around the room without a bulky keyboard made the end-user experience even more pleasing. In your backup material, I provided you with pricing of all three of these laptops. All have similar functionality, differing only in the processor, the memory, and the durability of the device. As teachers continued working with the devices, it was determined that the majority of the staff would best utilize the Lenovo 11E, while the PPS and PE departments would best utilize the Lenovo N23. What separates these two devices from the E260 again is the rugged design. These things are built for tougher and rougher conditions, and as well as the built-in stylus. The Lenovo 260 has a built-in stylus, whereas the 11E and the N23 do not. The rugged design is of higher importance for us with the longevity of the devices and the conditions that they're going to be being used in. For the Lenovo 11E, Gov Connection actually provided the lowest price, but after careful investigation, it is determined that the device that they were quoting us did not allow for the full 360-degree tablet mode. It only allowed for 180 degrees. What that means is that the tablet they provided would only be able to open to here. It was not able to completely flip around to be a full tablet. This is a feature that was most important for our staff. Other differences included the processors and the different screens, all which make a difference in the end-user experience. With all those factors taken into consideration, it'd be my recommendation to purchase the Lenovo 11E and the Lenovo N23 from ATS. They provided the lowest cost for the equipment that we're looking to purchase. We've been working with ATS for the past few years. They continue to provide exceptional service and quality product for us. A couple of other feeder districts are also utilizing ATS for their technology purchases based upon our recommendations and our experiences. I think it's important to note that five years ago, ATS provided 700 desktop computers for us. Those desktops are in wonderful condition, they're being used on a daily basis, and they are lasting. If you have any further questions, please give me a call, and I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Okay. So before we get into the discussion initially on the technology purchase, again, for our board and for those in attendance, that is available as part of Board Docs. It's an embedded video in there. Plan will be on a go-forward basis to have this available in the public content at least 48 hours prior to the meeting, so that everyone can have the opportunity to view it. We will not view this on a go-forward basis, because we have a one-way dialogue presentation. What we will do then is go to the proposal, entertain questions from the members of the board, and then act on recommendation if appropriate at that time. So having said that, Brian, thank you for being our volunteer there, and acknowledging the proposal for technology purchase on the laptops as described in the presentation. Entertain a motion for the purchase as described of the ATS as Brian proposed in the presentation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion is second. Discussion. Brian is... Go ahead.
You mentioned that ATS is being used by other feeder districts.
Yes.
Is there any buying power? Because we've done that in the past where we've had collaborative purchases, smaller things like paper and all that, where we had some buying power.
I had a conversation with the ATS representative today with regards to that, and until we get to quantities of 2,500 to 3,000, he's really not going to be able to benefit and get any better pricing than what he's currently getting for us today. The way that they work when they're competing against, they're competing against other resellers when they work with Lenovo. We are not able to go directly to Lenovo, which is why we're going through a reseller, and so the reseller works with the distributor. And they compete, the distributors compete with one to get the first price, and then they submit their job, and whoever gets there first gets the best price. That's the way that it's been working. So I learned a lot in this process over the past few months trying to figure out exactly how to go about doing this, because those thoughts did cross my mind as well as to be able to go into, you know, with Frankfurt, once at 57, purchasing the N23s, and also some of Hillsburg purchasing the N23s. So that absolutely came across, but unfortunately, we don't need to go on with this.
Looking at the contract, since saying that we're going to be moving forward, it's a three-year contract, if you're going to be pretty tight now, is that anything to be concerned about? Do you pay the penalty and double the rate with AT&amp;T, or do you...
So what's interesting, and one point of clarification I think I want to be clear to tonight, is that the numbers that were being presented with...
That'll be the next motion.
That's one.
Yeah, that'll be the next motion.
Sorry. When we get to Bandwidth, that question.
So this, so some of the staff already has laptops?
Correct.
What laptop do they have?
Our math teachers and our science teachers have the Lenovo 260. These laptops come with a three-year accidental damage protection warranty. So if they are dropped, accidentally spilled coffee on, anything with these devices, they are fully warranted for the three-year period of time. The 11E is the device that's more rugged, which is why we didn't go with the accidental damage protection on those and just went with the standard three-year warranty on those, because they're designed, and that was the one that was up here this evening being used for presentation, that was the 11E. And then the, that one has more processing power, has more memory, more utilization for our staff that are using that on a daily basis for presentations in the classroom. Those teachers need that processing speed so they can have multiple programs running at the same time. With the N23, it has a smaller processor and a smaller amount of memory, which means that they're not going to be able to use as many programs as once. They're not going to be able to have the five different websites that they want to address in the classroom all at the same time. So that's why the PPS department, which will be utilizing them for more of a scheduling type basis, meetings that are held outside of their offices, in arena scheduling type meetings, will be able to use the student ones, which is what you have in front of you this evening. The PE departments are also will be able to utilize these. They use them for attendance, they use them for basic presentations, and also some of the software applications that they would be using in the PE environment.
Will this be a fiscal '17 or '18 purchase?
Great question. This is actually going to be part of fiscal '18 purchasing. We need to place the order soon so that we can have the product by the time the teachers come back in August. So we need to place the order now, but knowing, the vendor knows that they will not receive payment until into July.
So do we have a budget for what we're going to be spending on technology in 2018 as a whole?
Yes, we do. As a matter of fact, the budget, I believe, has remained the exact same as what it was for fiscal '17.
That's what we have right now, and if we were to, you know, and I understand the question, if we're going to wait until September, October to purchase anything, it'll be kind of a rough start to the school year. But right now, with what we did in the forecast, we would be looking at about the same amount this year, which I believe is 850,000.
880,000.
850?
880, correct.
About 880,000.
You mentioned it was a next year's budget.
Yes.
But then the same question was, was that part of our five-year forecast? And the answer, yes.
The, what have we spent this year in the technology budget?
Right, what do you have left? You've got about...
So the budget was 880,000. We spent 810,000, so there's a remaining $70,000 left in the budget.
Kind of skip ahead to Ron's question now, and I know that's kind of on the other end, but you mentioned hardware in there, and, you know, if we upgrade the Comcast and we have additional computers on there and they're maxed out, and the hardware does not, you know, if we need to upgrade the hardware, you mentioned on the video 2018, I mean, how, how does that fit into the budget?
That is planned in next year's budget as well. I, we're currently working with vendors on what the best plan of attack is as we are going to experience, we know we're going to experience an increase in the amount of bandwidth that is utilized, so we have budgeted for that in preparation for upcoming school year. And those conversations will continue with the vendors until we have a solution in place.
And we're anticipating in the neighborhood of 100,000 to...
Yes.
...how it's working out.
Yes.
So these, the computers we have here, are they just being used for student use now?
Right now, those are, we have a number of carts that are out and about throughout the district that the students are using. Some in our special life classes, some in, some teachers that are piloting a one-to-one environment in English, reading, and science. So today, they're in the hands of students. These other ones that are in front of you that I would recommend putting in the hands of the PPS department, because they don't, they need the limited functionality when they're out and about, and the same with the PE department.
So we have a pretty big jump from the N23s in price versus the 11Es, and that's pretty much, it looks like the 11Es you're going, you're upgrading to the top of the line processor that they offer in that computer and the top of the storage and memory?
Kind of the middle of the road, actually, because we can go all the way up to an I7 processor on those, which we're not going to, and the hard drive is kind of up in, up on the higher ends, but again, it allows for the functionality for our teachers to be able to utilize them effectively in the classroom.
This is the teachers' assigned property? They're responsible for securing them or doing something with them at the end of the night or taking them with them?
Absolutely, they are, yes.
Going back to ATS, if you were to call Lenovo, they're going to send you to a reseller somewhere to that firm?
Correct.
Are they taking sort of fee or anything?
Whatever their upcharge is, it's just their resale. I will tell you that they beat, they beat the other competitors pretty readily. On whatever device that we go out and get a price on, ATS has come back and beat them. We have an excellent relationship with them. They provide service for all of our computers, whether it's in warranty or out of warranty. They come pick it up, and they come back and drop it off. We have no charge to them.
So leave a launder in between?
I'm sorry?
Do they leave a launder in between?
If necessary, absolutely.
You said Lenovo does not sell direct to the school, not sell direct to the school?
They do not sell direct to the end user, that is correct.
Does ATS sell retail, or do they just sell to business?
They sell mostly to businesses.
But they do have the ability to sell direct?
It does.
Is purchase the only option? Was there a lease option evaluated?
Yes, there was.
How did that come up?
It was about, oh, Brad, what did I say? 2.4% or something along that lines?
It was quite a bit higher than the last time we had gone to market. In fact, the last time we've gone to market, it was under two.
It was under two, it was 1.85.
Yes, and if we had been at that 1.85, it would have been at a discussion point with our current credit rating. It was over, over two, quite a little too.
What do the teachers have now?
Our teachers have a range of laptops. The laptops that are in our district are attached to carts. They don't have the ability to take them home unless they have one of the new Lenovo E260s. They range anywhere in age from one year to 10 years old. So a combination of Lenovos, Dells, HPs, so it's kind of a mixed bag of laptops that are out and about throughout the district. So we'd be looking to try and condense that to make it easier on the technology staff for imaging and maintaining the devices over the life of them.
And I did ask you before, they are phasing out the desktops in the classrooms in the office structure?
That is also correct.
In three to five years, like what's the salvage value? Do you turn these back over, or what do you do?
The salvage value...